Monica, how can I do this without this thing?
Yeah, you can't.
Shall we? Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. This is Town of Alpine Town Council Meeting on August 5th at 7:00 PM. First order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Burchard.
Here.
Mayor Green. Councilmember Weirda.
Here.
And Councilmember Scafidi.
Here.
Mayor Green, you have a quorum of the council with all members present, with Councilmember Weirda joining us by phone.
All right, thank you. Next is the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion? You guys, if you had a chance to look at the agenda when it first got sent out, there was quite a few things on there, and we decided to pull those and consolidate those. So Monica's gonna be working with Gina too. We came up with what I think is a good plan. We'll have like a standalone document similar to the language development code with all the building codes, exceptions, all that stuff. And so it's one thing that can get passed whenever, however often it has to get passed. And then if there's additional exceptions that need to be made on a yearly basis, whatever, it can happen in that document instead of having it happen in six different documents. So anyways, you'll see that in the future. Sorry if you spent time reading some of those, you know, those first drafts.
IBCs?
Yeah, yeah. Don't get into the like the 1,800 page.
The good news is that if you did read them, it's not wasted time because we don't anticipate any adjustments to the language, just an adjustment to the way it's.
The format.
Yeah, the format, yes.
Anyways, is there any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Agenda passed. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion. It's been seconded. Discussion? Did everyone have a chance to look at the bills to pay report and all that stuff? Okay, and I know Councilmember Scafidi went through the bills this time. Yep. All right. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next, we'll go right into reports. So I wanted to give everyone a little update on the master plan. Our steering committee has met recently, and we had a lot of the results, kind of the initial results from the consultants in that meeting, and I think it went great, and they presented those to us. So I think we'll have those results up on the website soon. But what they did is they kind of looked at the current environment around Alpine, and I think they hit it out of the park. So that was very good. We do have another meeting coming up, a stakeholder meeting on the 19th, and most people should have received an invitation. And Monica, I'm thinking of one other person that we.
I actually was thinking the same thing. I don't think we invited Senator Dox.
Yeah, we need to invite Senator Dox and Andrew Byron as well.
That's okay.
So if you could ask the group to do that, that'd be great. And so if you received an email as an invitation to the stakeholder meeting at the Civic Center on the 19th and haven't had a chance to RSVP, please get back to us. And yeah, I think it's gonna be very productive and an opportunity for people to really have their voice heard at that meeting. So if you want to attend the stakeholder meeting and you have a, you think you have a valid reason why, please just email me, email the clerk, and let us know if you'd like to attend, and we're happy to consider, so.
Was there a reason why they did middle of the day with people working?
Yeah, it's tough.
Because 11 to 2, I was like, I can't make it.
Oh, you can't?
No.
You should send someone from your office or something. Or Keith is gonna come. Yeah, I think he mentioned that he might be able to come. But the reason why, so the consultants are in town, and they also have to come to the town council that meeting and give us a report. So we kind of chose, we'll feed you lunch, come. If you can only come for an hour, you should definitely come.
I'm at the airport. Sorry. It's okay. I just wanted to check and see if 11 to 2 was the time. I'll send someone.
Whoever, whoever you're picking up, you should tell them there's Uber in town.
Do you have any, do you have availability else, other times throughout that day? Like I was avail, and I don't mean to be.
Well, we can't change the.
Yeah, you can't change the time. It's okay. Time of the event. However, they are gonna be here, and they're gonna do a tour. You would have the opportunity to have, to have some conversation. Yeah, I'm good until, I'm picking my daughter up at the airport. I'm good until 11:30. So if there is any tour or anything, I would love.
So why don't you come early, leave at 11:30, and then.
Get a little time.
Yeah, and get a feel for.
Yeah, I think that would be great. I'll make sure that they're aware that that's gonna happen. Okay. Yeah, we don't want you to feel like you missed. No, I, it's my own schedule.
So anyways, please, if you, if you received an email or think you should have received an email on that invitation, please reach out to me. And then I wanted to give an update on the car show and all that stuff coming on next weekend, but I figured you'd be a much better person to do everything on that.
So next Saturday, the 16?
15?
15, 16?
16.
16.
Is the annual Alpine Car Show presented by Top of the Rockies. And also the Star Valley Street Market will be here all day again, as they have been the last two years. And there will also be the art fair down on the lawn at Bank of Jackson Home. So lots going on that day. Lots of opportunity to be about town.
Yep.
If you want to sign up for the car show, you can register on the website, ridealpine.com. You can just get right on there and register and be ahead of the game. Mo?
Get your multiple cars signed up, Mo. Thank you. Let's see. If I think of anything else, I'll jump back in there. But next, we'll go to the clerk treasury report.
Thank you. So the first item on my list is that the Town of Alpine has been awarded $60,000 through the Governor's Infrastructure Matching Funds Program. So if you recall, you recently passed a resolution allowing us to apply for a grant that would cover the matching funds for our Safe Streets for All grant. I'm very grateful to Mary from Lincoln County, who handles all of their grants, and she is the one who notified us that this money, these monies were available. I'd like to thank Sarah, who is, who put the grant package together, and then her and I reviewed it. The mayor signed it, and we've been awarded the $60,000 grant to cover our matching funds for the Safe Streets for All grant. So that's very exciting. I mean, it's considerable amount of money.
Just saved us $60,000 out of the budget.
Done.
Yep.
Yeah, very exciting. So our master, our transportation master plan process, there will be no out of, out of the operating budget money that happens for the Town of Alpine. So that's exciting.
Yay, I think that deserves an applause. $60,000.
It is. And so all expenditures then are monitored and reported in accordance with the Enrolled Act 50, Section 325, and state oversight protocols. So thank you to the governor for awarding us the grant. The next item I have on my list is, I've been, I followed up recently with Decoria and Company about our single audit. It has been a very long process. Single audits are typically a very long process. However, ours has been extremely complicated due to the conversion of systems in the middle of the fiscal year that they were auditing. So it's created, it's just taken more time to really be able to trace everything back between the two systems. And so it is the, it's in its final review phase now, and we anticipate the finalized audit and financial statements will be delivered to us within the next couple of weeks. Upon receipt, they will be shared with the council and filed with the appropriate oversight entities to maintain full compliance. So, yeah. So I'm excited for that to be done. It's, it's just one of those things that the state does keep checking in with us, and I check in with them and, and then give them an update. And they, they understand that it takes time, but I'll, I'll just be glad to see that put to bed. So progress also continues on development of our utility billing ordinance and the new utility fee ordinance. So I have, I would like to schedule with your permission a work session prior to the 19, the August 19th meeting. I think, you know, it's a big, it's a big process, and I would like for us to have sufficient time to really, as a group, sit down and read through it and make recommendations. If we're, if everybody's comfortable in that work session, we can certainly have it on the agenda to do the first reading. But if not, then we can just simply shift it to another agenda. But it's, it's a big departure from a lot of what we're doing now. So I really feel like it needs councils to be able to really sit here and vet it together.
Are you suggesting like a 6 o'clock work session?
If, yes, if that's okay with you.
Does anyone, is everyone here on the 19th?
Yeah, so just to clarify, this is to raise water sewer rates? So water and sewer rates, the proposal, they will be proposed in the billing fee ordinance to be increased over what they are now. The utility billing ordinance, we're, we're making a lot of changes to the, to operational structure as well as, you know, just the basic requirements. So currently, under the current utility billing ordinance, in the event that somebody does a connection to the water system, they pay a connection fee. And if there isn't a physical connection, then our, then we put it in. We hire a contractor to come in and put in that connection, and it costs the Town of Alpine about three times the amount that we collect in connection fees. And so what we're recommending in this, we're not in the excavation business either. And so, you know, to be able to pay somebody's retail rates to do that, we're gonna pass that over to the property owners. So there's those kind of things. So the utility ordinance is gonna be separate from the fees as well. So the individual fees are being pulled out of the current ordinance, and we're gonna have a standalone ordinance so that if fees adjust, they will be, we won't have to re-adopt the entire, the full ordinance. And then is it kind of like lower valley energy, so people can trench their own? Electric or water? They could trench their own. They don't have to use someone we recommend? Correct. Okay, correct.
We, we will give them like four of our approved vendors. Of course, that's very, you know, a tenuous thing that we, when they're opening up our infrastructure, we wanna make sure it's done right, that they're not hitting pipes and stuff.
Well, we mark it, don't we? I mean.
Well, you, you call in, and they mark it for you, whatever. But then when the, when it's open, it has to be inspected by Craig or someone from the staff.
And, and your staff will also do the, the tap itself?
Yeah, the physical.
The physical tap to the water main. So, so breaking out those processes require a complete overhaul of the ordinance. And so the ordinance is pretty comprehensive. I mean, there's, there's a lot of information in the current ordinance, and we're changing a lot of that. So I wanna make sure that you guys all have, you know, an opportunity to sit with myself and Craig and really ask questions and be able to make sure that you have clarity.
What I would suggest is we do have a work session at 6 o'clock on the 19th, but get the ordinances over as soon as possible to everyone.
Yes.
So they have two weeks to read them.
Yeah, and so I'm on vacation next week, and so in order for all this to work out, I have to do, finish it before I leave. So you'll have it before, for Friday, by the end of day Friday.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, the first draft.
Is there anything else on your report?
The accrued leave balance update, you know, that we transferred to a PTO system for vacation and sick, that process was completed over the last two days. And so everybody's been notified, and all that's been executed. So moving forward, the staff will accrue based on the new rates adopted by council, and it, it'll all be reflective of PTO.
Great. I did think of the other thing that I wanted to mention. So back to the semi-quintennial committee. We're looking for members that are interested in being on the committee, and I know we've already talked to a couple. But if you have any interest in participating, I'd love to hear from you. We have a bunch of big things that we have kind of, that we're brainstorming on, things we wanna do, and it's just gonna be a great event. So if anyone's interested in getting involved, please reach out to me or the clerk, and we'll figure out how we can best use your abilities and your efforts. Next, Public Works Director Craig Leesberg.
Good evening.
Hi, Craig.
So the radio read meter project is moving along nicely, I guess. The town is completely done with our half of the project. Hydro Corp is coming in on the 18th of August. I think they're from Michigan or Minnesota, one of them. And they're scheduling right now for the interior meters, and they're expecting that's gonna be two weeks, and that's gonna be completely done. So we're looking forward to that. These, this next month, we're hoping to get the rest of the vaults in, except for one, which is Targi Village. That one's not gonna be onsite until October, but that'll be the last one. So hopefully by the middle of September, we should be 99% done with this project, and it's amazing.
And so then October 1st would be the first time that we.
We haven't nailed that down really yet, have we?
What?
When we're gonna start reading.
When we're gonna start billing with the actual read.
And so that's, that's gonna be dependent upon the passing of the new ordinances. However, I, I think our process should be as soon as we're able to. It would be nice if we could generate readings.
And we will.
Provide them to the property, so that they know what that's going to look like. But when, once we start the process of adoption of the new ordinances, there'll be an effective date of when that will start.
We'll discuss that on the 19th, whenever town council thinks it's appropriate to. We'll discuss that on the 19th, whenever town council thinks it's appropriate to start-
And how to time it, yeah.
-reading and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
We did a test run, and normally in years past, you know, it'd take me and another guy four weeks to read the meters, that's why we do it once a year. It took me 15 minutes, just with the drive around. With the antennas, it's gonna be 10 minutes, so, all of them.
When you're having to drive around and do it?
Yeah, that's-
You have the antennas, it's instantaneous.
It's, it's, yes, correct, I misspoke, yeah, instantaneous, yeah.
For those radio reads that are in the, well, we'll say borderline road slash property, are we getting, reaching out to property owners to mark them for plow season, so we're not taking them out?
So we won't take them out, there's, they make a special lid that has a recess deal for the radio.
Okay.
So, yeah, everything will be perfect.
So is, are we swapping? I'm just thinking, there are several in my neighborhood that are definitely prone to getting taken out, or could be prone to being taken out.
Swapping, what do you mean?
That's what I'm asking, so, right now we have, you have the lid-
Right.
-and then you have the radio read, which sits about half inch to three quarters-
So the radios that are on the pit, are the ones on your pits, they're like, they should only be like a quarter inch, they're, they're almost flush with the lid.
Yeah.
But not quite. But if they're in the roadway, we're gonna get the recessed spot in the lid, so that they sit flush.
Sit flush, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll have all those changed out by the winter.
Yeah, yeah, if they're, if they're in danger of being in the plow path.
Yep, okay, cool.
So that's it on that. The pretreatment plant's moving along, that's amazing. So they're planning on doing a, like a soft startup around Labor Day, so that's huge. I think that everybody's been waiting for this for a long time, they're gonna start it up with water, make sure everything is working as it should, and then, yeah, if everything goes good, then they'll start half the plant, and then they're gonna use the, half the plant for four weeks, and then, then they'll bring the, the screw press online after that. So that's, that's really good news.
That's real exciting.
Yeah, and then, Water Master Plan, but in the, they're finalizing it right now, we should have that within a week or so. So yeah, excited for that, really excited. It comes with a GIS system too, so I'm gonna see which GIS system is easier to use, and then we'll just transfer data over to one or the other, yep.
Yeah, that's great. Is that all you had?
That is it.
Okay, so while we have you, we might as well ask some questions, and there's several of the resolutions are kind of pertinent to, to you and the conversation. So, the-
Application?
Yeah, where's that on there? You're, basically you're gonna put the application together-
For the level three?
Yes.
Yes.
And that's pretty streamlined, okay, so that's resolution-
E.
E. And if you need any help, you're going to ask Sunrise to help you on that?
That's correct.
Okay, so you'll put it together and they'll kind of look it over or something to the expert?
And Sunrise has communicated to both Craig and I that they, there will be no cost to the town of Alpine for them to assist with that.
Correct, yeah, it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, and this is to apply to the Water Development Commission for more money for the tie-in of the mega well system.
Oh.
Which is, the total cost is $415,000, it's a 50% match, so they'll cover half of that.
And then our intention is to go to SLIB for the other 50%, of which we may have to match, say, 25% or whatever, but this is the first-
The first step, yeah. The, the application is due September 1st, and once that's done, then I have to go to Casper in November and present my case.
Casper or Cheyenne?
This one's Casper.
Oh, okay.
The level threes go to Casper.
Gotcha.
Level ones go to Cheyenne.
Okay.
And then just for clarification, when does it get, when, if we receive it, does it get awarded, Craig?
Sometime in November, and then it has to go to the legislature-
Yep.
-and be funded during that process, so it would, it's likely that we would get the funding, we would know sometime in November if we were on their, you know-
List, yeah.
Their list, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
And then, and then how long does that process take to go to legislature?
So, it would, funds would be available end of March, early April.
Okay.
Yep.
And so, so just from a budgeting perspective, I would have, the first step then would be design, and so there would be engineering costs that if, if we were successful, that would have to be paid out of the operating budget in this current fiscal year that we're now in. However, the, I assume, we assume the bulk of the project, once they bid it, award it, and start building it, it would not happen until the, until the next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we don't, so, we don't anticipate a huge impact to the budget in this fiscal year, but as we go through this process and see what is awarded or, or not, then we will know.
Gotcha, man. How does that calendar align with the SLIB?
So SLIB, the applications have to be in, in February to be on the intended use plan, so it lines up perfectly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll know November-
Yep.
-if we're successful, we'll go to SLIB, and then if we're not successful with SLIB, is there a, I mean, I assume there's a thanks, but unfortunately we can't, thanks?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
They say if we're not successful with SLIB for the majority of the funding, is there, it's a, thanks for thinking of us, for the awardment?
Well, in, in, no.
For $250,000.
No, well, but in truth, some of what we're doing through the revisions to the utility billing structure, and then also, I'm working towards the development of a capacity fee ordinance as well. So you need to remember that the capacity fees would be available to fund the match if necessary. So the way in which we look at the money that we receive is, is going to be different on the backside of passing all of these ordinances, 'cause right now, connection fees and the way they're done, they're, they're, you know, that all goes into the operating budget and is spent as the operating budget. So we're going to have connection fees, which is really just truly gonna cover just the cost to, to the town of Alpine to connect, so they will be reduced, and then we'll have capacity fees, which will be shifted into a completely separate fund and only be allowed to be spent on things such as interconnecting the well.
Got to tell you that.
Yeah, so, so it's going, it's really going to shift the ideology about the way we budget, because tho, those monies are gonna be in very separate buckets.
I think the very direct question is, we need from you, and maybe you can ask Lonnie, if we get approved for the level three and SLIB doesn't come through, what options do we have at that point?
Then we'd have to come up with the money.
Yeah.
If we get approved for the grant, then we're spending the money no matter what.
Yep. Oh, no, we could back out of it.
That's the-
Yes, we, we for sure could. I, I strongly encourage everybody here not, like, we got, this is a 911, huge thing, tying in that mega well. I can't get water across the river if something happens, you know?
No, we-
That line travels across the bridge, nothing should happen, but if it does, and that mega well's tied in, I close two valves, I run this side, run that side, if something happens on that bridge, those guys are without water for, who knows? It's a specialized company that has to come in and fix that.
Yeah. No, I think we're all on the same page that it's very important, but I think we just have to understand-
Yeah.
Yeah, we could back out, absolutely, 100%, yep.
But I started researching, and I kinda shared with you guys, I have found out our commercial buildings in Alpine are under assessed grossly, so I think there could be money there, hopefully in the next couple of years that would start to show up if we can get those reassessed. I mean, that might be one option, but-
I think there's several things that we're, we need to discuss and talk about, but that's, you know, one that we would hope would come through, but-
Yeah.
Anyway.
And, and again, I, I actually, I actually did some research on the back of that. Someday I would love to chat with you about that specifics, 'cause it was fascinating to me, but just to note that tax collection does not equal water revenue.
Yes.
So, they're, they're-
No, I don't think it's a large amount, but I think it's an amount.
Yeah, no, but the town of Alpine, I, I, I think it's something I wanna chat with you about, 'cause I'm very interested in it.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for Craig while we've got him? I mean, he's gonna take off, he's got something else he's gotta go to, but-
The only other thing that he's responsible for is, on here, is the lighting retrofit project at the Civic Center.
Civic Center.
Um...
Yeah.
The other, that's the only other thing, and I believe, I don't know if Amy had questions about that, I know she had sent an email, I think I copied you on the response, maybe not.
So will they be brighter?
Way brighter.
Okay, 'cause every time we go in there, we're like, this is really depressing, in this gym.
We did this at the wastewater treatment plant.
Is it like night and day? Okay, 'cause there, it's like, there's these great light fixtures and it's just like, you can't see the ball, you can't see this.
Yep.
Okay.
It's, it's perfect for like a disco, but that's about it, our current learning.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yeah, but no, there, there is gonna be a cost, and it shows how you can recoup the cost over time, but I, I think it's kind of a no-brainer, but we'll be able to talk about that later.
They, I've got the email right here, they'll pay for 54% of the costs, lower valley will. If we do it before September 15th, they'll do 60%, and the project cost is $11,418.
Yeah, it's a-
So they'll cover 60% if we do it before the 15th.
Well, we can, we can make that happen, I think.
Yeah, you won't regret it.
Oh no, I'm not.
Well, and then I think the rest of the, the cost would be recouped over time.
It would.
We, we do have a, we, our bills are pretty substantial at the Civic Center.
And it, it is dark in there, you know?
Yeah, it's really dark.
Mm-hmm.
All right, any other questions for Craig?
Perfect.
Thanks Craig.
Thank you.
Have fun at your birthday party.
Thank you.
Aww.
Have a good night.
See ya.
See ya.
See you guys.
All right, uh, let's see, code enforcement officer has a report and it was submitted online. Uh, so next, we'll go right into action items. I don't know if anyone showed up to make public comment, we have a handful of people here in the audience, so I'm not too worried about making comments, we'll probably field those if you have any comments during the agenda item, but-
I love how they're all looking at you, Dan.
One person acts as a handful of people, I'll just say that. We'll go right into action items, so, first is the Snake River MEP invoice. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the Snake River MEP invoice 002.
I second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So, hopefully everyone saw Kevin's memo with the breakdown of the costs. I am so pleased that they have jumped in, and for one, we got all the parts, and thanks to Jim and, and Isaiah Gross to, to make that happen. So, we're kind of moving forward at full steam, so that's great. But, yeah, of course, this is, this is their bill for the last month, I guess. Does anyone have any questions on this bill?
I like how they give weather reports on their invoices.
Isn't that nice? Yeah, you know each day, how, what the conditions were like, who was there, how many hours?
It's impressive.
It's a, it's definitely an impressive operation, and, so yeah, I, I think it's great, but, yeah. You know exactly what the weather was like, who, who showed up, the whole thing, so it's, it's been a great, great change for us. Any specific questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of approval of Snake River MEP invoice number 002, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. All right, next, we have the America 250 Grant Program. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-034, authorizing the town of Alpine to submit an application for the America 250 Grant Program administered by the Wyoming Department of State Parks and Cultural Resources.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion.
Glad I didn't have to say sensus quensum.
Semi-senquintennial?
Semi-senquintennial.
Uh, Madam Clerk, can you give us a little background on this?
Yeah, and so there is a grant program being offered to help assist communities with creating, almost like travel and tourism, or community pride events. The town of Thane has already been awarded their grant for the full $25,000. They are doing a mural on their Civic Center. And so, we haven't, the project hasn't been chosen, the project will ultimately come back, but we'd like, if, with your permission, to be able to start the process, to get the application started even before the exact project is identified. The plan for, I think at this time, is we need to get some of the people together, who's gonna be on that committee, and there, 'cause I've already gotten, the staff has already submitted to me ideas. One is to, to put up the Ferry Peak Park, was submitted to me by Melody today, to put up the Ferry Peak Park fence, to do it, utilizing these funds to do like a wrought iron cutouts that pays-
Tribute?
Tribute to historical events in the state of Wyoming.
It's a really nice-
Like a 101?
I, that hasn't been decided, but-
That's one thing that came up as an option, right?
It's an option, so-
Getting the mural done would be amazing, we just need to find a place to do it.
We'd need a, big enough wall, do you know what I mean? So the, those are the types of things, that this grant is not able to be spent on the celebration. What I think they're looking for is to have long-term cultural impact on communities, a place for people to go and, you know, just to honor what Wyoming's about.
Something that doesn't just last one day, it lasts at least a season.
Right, it lasts, it lasts for a time, and so, the goal would be to get started with your permission on the grant application and then identify, for the committee to identify maybe a few projects, and then bring it to town council to, to make the decision on what project we should pursue in the grant.
Great, any questions for Monica on that?
It's a great opportunity.
It is a huge opportunity, yeah.
Right.
Can it go towards a sewer plant?
Improve this-
It does improve the quality.
Let's put the mural on the side of the sewer plant. Not a bad idea, I mean, come on. Where else are you gonna get ideas like that? All right, all those in favor of resolution number 2025-034, said resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. Uh, okay, next is resolution number 2025-035.
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-035, to approve and budget funds for the lighting retrofit project at the Alpine Civic Center.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So we've already talked to Craig about this, and he kinda gave us some of the specifics, but want to show this project overview, and Amy, sorry if you can't see this, and maybe you've already seen it, it's in the agenda, but the estimated cost of the project is $11,418. Sounds like if we do it before September 1st, they would pay roughly 60%, which is $6,200 or in, in that range. We'd be on the hook for $5218, which would come out of the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And it should be a return on investment of about four years, so, and the quality of light, as Councilmember Skaviti has asked, is gonna be much better, so, anyways, does anyone have any questions on this project?
We need to, oh, you said lower valleys and stuff? We need to, oh, you said Lower Valley's installing it, or who's installing it?
Actually, so like, we would have a contractor install it, but they pay for that portion of it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Our, our electrician
Okay.
has submitted, he's the one who created all that.
Servant, okay.
Yes.
Yep.
He's the one who created all the stuff and.
Gotcha.
With the grant.
Yep, 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 okay.
Yeah.
So more energy efficient and better light, win-win.
Yep.
Yep, four years recouped. Aye.
It all sounds good, doesn't it? All right, any further questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three five, to approve, oh, let's see, to approve in budget funds for the lighting retrofit project at the Alpine Civic Center, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, resolution passes. Next is D.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three six, resolution to amend the budget for the wastewater pretreatment facility, task work order number two.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Madam Clerk, this is your.
Yeah, so JVA had submitted some time ago an estimate to assist with development of the industrial wastewater fees and permitting process and program for the new pretreatment plant. However, it's been some time since those initial estimates were sought. I did seek out, in, I think it was in the February timeframe, we had asked for an update. Unfortunately, JVA has been very, very busy, so they put together some additional information on task work order two, and the prices increased, I think is, it, you'd have to go back to the resolution, but I think it's like three thousand seven hundred.
Yeah, it's three thousand seven.
So their prices have, it's just gone up based on, they know, they do also have more information now, they've been involved in some of this, so. This is a matter of just ensuring that the budget, that the money is, is in the budget to do the project at that cost.
We already budgeted ten thousand.
Ten thousand dollars is budgeted.
Just want to change it.
Correct.
Technically, we don't have to do this, but we're trying to be totally transparent, make sure everybody understands what it is.
Correct.
When the budget season comes around next year, and.
Yeah, and for anyone who doesn't understand, typically, we pass a budget, and then, you know, we do our business throughout the year, and then at the end of the year, there is simply a budget amendment to just make it all work. However, in the effort to be proactive and completely transparent about things that were unplanned for, this is the process that I'm doing. Unless there's some specific line item that I know is going to cover the cost, it's going to say that we're going to amend the budget, and simply the appropriate line item will be amended. And so I am actually going to, throughout the year, I will go in and amend the budget by the amount that you approve. And so we will see the year-to-date based on your clear understanding that some things may have shifted throughout the year.
Monica, can I ask you a question on that?
Absolutely.
Yep, so, everything you just said made sense, and thank you, that answered one of my questions. So on any particular line item that's going to be increased for whatever reason that we approve, how are you deciding which other line item is then decreased in order to balance the books?
And.
Very good question.
It is a good question, so unless there is some specific funds available that I'm aware of to communicate, the assumption should be that we are taking prior year fund balance, so we're spending our cash.
Yeah, and then when the budget season comes around, we figure out where we have a surplus or whatever, and we.
And then we shift.
We shift monies around at that point, but at this, we are assuming that we're spending three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars in cash in the budget to afford this, so that's a very good question.
It really is.
Also the budget.
Does that answer the question?
Yep, so that, that answers my question, and it leads into my follow-up question, is as we're spending surplus from either the year before, or cash reserves, or
Yes.
call it the emergency fund, however you want to label that, is there a mechanism then, when we go to do next year's budget, to replenish that fund so that there is money available for next year's unexpected expenses?
There's no tool, there's no anything, but I mean, obviously.
I will tell you, I have been involved in municipal, but not town budgets, this is water and sewer budget. Historically, that I manage, that did have a specific expense account for emergency or unbudgeted expenses that could be utilized throughout the year. We don't have that line item, but I am completely open, if it's council's wishes, to build in some sort of reserve to each budget. We could certainly look at that next year, I'm not opposed to it, I've done it in the past, so it makes complete logical sense to me.
It's easy in the general fund to do that, but these water and sewer funds.
Yeah, others it's harder, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So another very good question, and that's something that you should work with Monica on, if that's something that you think we should do, Amy, that we can suggest that for next year.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution? All right, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three six, a resolution to amend the budget for the wastewater pretreatment facility, task order number two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, oh.
Aye.
Sorry, opposed, hearing none, resolution passes. All right, next, we're on to resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three seven.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three seven, authorizing the submission of a level-three construction funding application to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for the well number four tie-in project.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So this is kind of the follow-up to the work session that we had regarding the water development, the, excuse me, what's it called?
Master plant.
Water master plants, thank you. And the findings of that were basically tying in well number four, or also known as the mega well, is hugely important. The, our Craig was here and said how important it was, make sure we remember how important it is. I think it's well worth it for us to go and try to get those funds. There was another option, that we would go for the full boat and try to, what was it, about one point eight million dollars to get it, a bigger pump, get it sized up. I think that's probably better to wait until the future, when the demand is really there, that we need that, but down the road, obviously, when we have the water model and all that stuff, it'll tell us when it, which, when it becomes vital. This is a great first step, and I don't think we're asking too much. I was told by the gentleman from the Water Commission that they have something in the range of about seventeen million dollars per year to spend on these types of projects. So I know there's huge asks all over the state for this type of level-three funding, but four hundred and fifteen thousand doesn't seem like much. We do have the SLIB board to go to for the other fifty percent, but there will be some percentage of that, we will have to more likely come up with some of that money. I don't know exactly what the percentage is, but let's just say it's somewhere in the range of sixty, forty, or, you know, I think we're probably going to have to be on the hook for the remaining fifty, sixty thousand dollars, just doing some rough math in my head. There might be other funding options that, of course, we'll have to look into, and, and we will try to get, of course, but to me, this is hugely important, it's been designated kind of on our capital project list since basically day one.
And it, it is my understanding, and we'll clarify this through the capacity fee ordinance when it's passed, or if it's passed, excuse me. I do believe that we can start a project and then reimburse the town as well. So there may be an opportunity, depending on how cash is, for the town to even maybe lend
Yep.
if necessary, the water department, the money, and then as capacity fee money comes in, the town could then be reimbursed. I mean, there, but long-term, once that capacity fee money, once that account is built up, hopefully that reduces the stress on, on the users.
Yeah.
The financial stress.
Water and sewer. Has to start paying for itself.
It does, it does.
It's probably the most important thing that the town of Alpine tries to fix.
It does.
And I don't know how long it's going to take, but it's very important, but, yeah. Building up our infrastructure is also very important, so. Any questions on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three seven, authorizing the submission of a level-three construction funding application to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for the well number four tie-in project, say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, resolution carries. Right, congratulation, Craig, you can go to work. Writing the application, all right, next, we have resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight, resolution appointing members to the Emergency Action Planning Committee, also known as EA PC, for the town of Alpine.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded, discussion. So this is something that we've been talking about for a while, I think it's really important to get this done. I think the town has an emergency action plan. I don't know, maybe Councilmember Larson can tell me more about that, but we really need to get this dialed in for all the different reasons. I mean, we just had a power outage, was it last winter or two winters ago, that was only a few hours, but, you know, really opened our eyes to the potential issue and in reason why this is important. I do want to, we, we've decided to appoint seven members. I'm sorry?
I see I got drafted.
Yeah, oh, you didn't know that?
No.
The clerk was supposed to reach out to all these members, I think she probably just forgot to talk to you about it.
Thought you were well qualified.
But I'll just run through the list real quick, so of course, I'll sit on this committee, the fire chief, someone from the county's emergency management. I don't know if it would be Jay Hogan Center, someone from his staff, the sheriff or someone from his staff, Councilmember Larson has definitely said he would do it as of fifteen seconds ago, the public works director, and the wastewater treatment plant supervisor. We could add more people if more people want to sit out, if you have any suggestions of other people you think should be added to it. I think this is a pretty good list, and everyone has said they would be more than happy to serve, so. That works.
Sounds like a good well-rounded committee.
Yeah, yeah, enough people from, you know, the county as well, to, I, I really think the county emergency management has a lot of the information we're going to need. They've already done it, we're, Alpine's part of their plan, so we just need to take their plan and add to it.
You said after the fair, he's happy to help.
Yeah, he needs to get past a few things, and he'll be ready to go, but anyways, any other feedback on this? All right, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three eight, a resolution appointing members to the Emergency Action Planning Committee, also known as EA PC, for the town of Alpine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, resolution carries. Okay, G, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine, a resolution authorizing an emergency repair and increasing the budget by fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of a replacement mixer for the wastewater treatment plant.
We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a second from Councilmember Larson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, can you give us the lowdown on this?
Yeah, it, it broke. I mean, really, not to be, it broke. Sorry.
Any more information needed?
No, this was.
It done broke.
It done broke, it's one of those thing, and now, this is a frustrating, this, I apologize, I didn't mean to sound smart. So it's one of the frustrating things that I'm running into with dealing with the financials of the wastewater treatment plant. We owe two point two million dollars on building a plant that it, that is aging. And so, so not only are we still planning to have built the plant how many years ago? And we, I looked at it today, I believe it's, it doesn't even mature until like twenty forty-one alone. And, and we're seeing these costs, you know, the UV lights this year, a hundred and forty thousand dollars, last year it was blowers, two hundred and some thousand. Year before, it was replacing the train, two hundred and sixty-ish thousand dollars, and so.
This is a direct correlation of an oversized plant that does not have enough users hooked up to it, that.
To cover the cost of it.
The users that are currently hooked up are having to bear the burden of paying for this plant. So, I mean, it's part of the reason why we're so invested in the master plan, we're trying to figure out how the town's going to grow in the future. At some point, this isn't going to be as big of a problem, we're going to have money in a fund that pays for things like this. But until that day happens, I think it's smart to do it the way we're doing, get approval from Town Council, to spend the money on these sort of things. But I don't know how vital this is to the operation, but it sounds like it's pretty vital.
Oh, yeah, that, so the mixer.
Just getting the stick.
Yeah, no, the mixer's definitely, definitely, the mixer's necessary, it's what keeps the liquor mixed. So it's a main part of the treatment process.
I guess we should ask Dustin to come, but yeah, I think, thank you for that, I, I don't know if there's anything more. Any other questions regarding this? Let's keep our sewer plant working.
Yeah, that's a really good idea.
Yeah. Keep our customers happy.
Keep our DQ permit.
Yes, all those good things. Any further questions? All right, all those in favor of resolution number twenty twenty-five dash zero three nine, a resolution authorizing emergency repair and increasing the budget by fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of a replacement mixer for the wastewater treatment plant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, resolution carries. World's record time on our action items, now I'll open it up to public comment. Mr. Scow, you have three minutes.
Well, let me see, I'd like to say congratulations to the Town Council for picking out new trim paint with the Town Council members. I really, I really needed to ask who did pick out the turquoise paint, but it did look a little lively, but I think this is a little bit more appropriate, is what we see here.
I was told to tell everyone that was a primer.
Uh-huh, sure.
It was a teal primer, and it was a temporary situation, but yes, thank you for noticing the new paint.
Thank you.
For all the.
I was kind of disappointed when I walked in, I looked at it and went.
I did too, what happened to the turquoise?
Well, and just so, the, the five people at home, it looks like, that are watching, if you didn't get an opportunity to see Town Hall before we painted over the primer.
You missed it.
It was kind of a bright teal cover, color, but that has been remedied, and everything's looking great, so I'm pretty sure they were just here. looking great, so I'm pretty sure they were just here moments ago, so I think they're getting close to being finished up here, hopefully, if not today, soon, but, yeah, it looks great, so come by and see the town staff, and tell them how great it looks.
I just thought that was a great post April Fool's Day joke.
Dan, the lesson learned is, you have paint swatches when you hire someone.
It's kind of a part of the system.
I'll tell you...
Takes away the guesswork.
I'll tell you specifically what happened, there was miscommunication on this, with this contractor, we said we wanted to match the color of the existing building with the stain, and then they assumed that the trim was included in that, they didn't ever ask us, you know, paint color, and so they found like a teal color on the side of the building that wasn't, maybe it didn't have the sun exposure, and they tried to match it to that, and it turned out way brighter. So, anyways, lesson learned, but it looks great now, so, thank you for your comment.
Yeah, and the mayor, and by the way, the mayor, Mayor Green and Mrs. Leesberg are responsible for the choosing of the current paint color.
You're not supposed to say that, as if any complaints come in.
They did a great job.
It looks good.
It looks good.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Any other comments? All right.
We have one more, one more music?
Oh, yeah, how many musics?
Nope, we're done.
Oh, we're done?
Music is done.
Never mind, no more music.
It was a lovely five weeks.
We have the circus on Thursday.
Oh, but we still have farmer's markets through the next week, September.
Yeah, and then, Reggae in the Rockies, September 5th is the next opportunity for music. Is there music at all during next weekend's events? There's no...
We have a DJ at the car show.
Is the, last year, the Arts Council brought a band, I don't know if they're doing a band.
I don't know if they're doing that or not.
Not sure.
That would be nice.
Anyway, all right, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion?
So moved, so moved, do we have a second? We have a second. All right, all those in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to let you go, I didn't want to tell you I was in the house last week. Oh, you did?